Okay, I'd like to call an order of the council meeting Monday night, 2016. Opened prayer, Father James and Paul.
Let's be in prayer. Dear wise and loving Father, thank you on behalf of all of our gathered here this evening. Thank you for your many abundant blessings to us and our community. Thank you for life itself, the measure of help we need to fulfill our callings, sustenance, and profriendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work, and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities for others. In the scriptures, you've said that citizens ought to respect the governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular for this assembled council. Graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times. Grant them a sense of welfare in the true needs of all our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, and the ability to work together in harmony even when there is dishonest disagreement. In your most blessed name we pray tonight and always. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, darkness color. Here? 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 Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Do you remember her?
Second.
Yes?
Yes.
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 All right, thank you very much. And for your consideration, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. Council meeting minutes, April 11, 2016. Special council meeting minutes, April 18, 2016. The mayor's court recedes, March 2016. Motion approved as presented.
Second.
Montague?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Lerman?
Yes.
Surratt?
Yes.
Foles?
Yes.
Thank you very much. At this time, wish to address council, please step forward, state your name and address.
Good evening. Good afternoon. My name is Greg Starwell, 611 Northbury Circle, Northeastern North Canton. I'm sure council knows me, and you probably guess what I'm here to speak about. I first moved to North Canton in 1969 as an apartment renter. I subsequently got married and purchased two homes in the city while my wife and I raised two children. North Canton has been a great place to live, raise a family, and now retire. Our city seal states pride in our past, hope for our future. It would seem that this council does not have pride in part of the past, beginning in 1963, when Mayor Squinell signed a resolution designating the city as the Dogwood City. This was due to requests from numerous citizens and organizations, and because of the aesthetic value of the Dogwood Tree as it was blended into the community of North Canton. Over the last 53 years, hundreds if not thousands of Dogwood Trees were purchased for North Canton's citizens' school children. I cannot tell you how many of those trees have survived to adorn the homes in our city. I'm told that an unnamed person or persons questioned this 1963 resolution at a 2012 community forum, leading to a contractor's form formulation of the most recent master plan. The master plan suggested dropping the Dogwood Tree designation for our city so that we would be titled as just North Canton. I know the council has had private and public requests to maintain the Dogwood Tree designation, but I'm not aware of any public or private support to drop the designation other than the current master plan. Unless there is some compelling cost benefit to pass a resolution 1-2016, I urge you to not pass its third reading so that we may maintain a little bit more pride in our past. Thank you for your time and for your service, Dr. Green.
Thank you very much.
Hi. I'm Jessica Surratt. My husband, Matt Surratt, we live on 63840 Street Northwest, Bray Muddler, Chris Muddler, Monica. Beautiful home built in 1911. However, the issue that we have is Portage. It's a main road that leads straight off 77, a lot of high access, and for deliveries and any personnel to come to our house, they forget how to get to our house. And the main road that actually goes to our house is the back alley. It is not named, it was just kind of there. It's poorly catch, but that's not really a big issue because it's travelable. But what I'd like to talk to council about today is, can we give it a name? Can we give it a purpose? Can we make it something special to North Canton? Because then I can tell people, hey, if you're coming to my house, don't just go down looking in and look for that small alley on the side. It can have a name. And that way, when I get my washer and dryer, or my refrigerator, we're not blocking the traffic on Portage, because I got a lot of people that did not like me in the neighborhood. And it would just be a little more inviting if we have people over. So that is my main concern. And then a little tidbit, it's a beautiful alley to be home. We hope to have it be a forever home. My husband and I are both in North Canton, but I have a little farm raised a mile away from where we live, and we don't plan to move here soon. And we hope for the same for my son, who's four. And we hope maybe to call it Adam's Alley, or Adam's Way. Ultimately, I want a good name. And the pride that I hold in North Canton, and I hope maybe my son can have the pride of having his own little alley. So I was 3:22 to speak. Thank you so much.
What was the address again?
Oh, 63840 Street. However, there's five houses that have access to that alley. It's kind of drivable for some and kind of not drivable for others.
I did visit the residents there to be able to hold a home that what we wanted in the city, we want to track down the families with young children. And I think we should obviously look into this in this area, see what we can do. Because it is, when you drive down there, if you don't see it, you do think it's purpose as a driveway. I'm not quite sure how it's made out on our maps, but if we could somehow name that so it is a street, we don't want a lot of traffic obviously back there, but it is accessible for those residents to dig their backyards and park when they arrive and so forth. It starts at Willamette and runs west, I think almost to 720 Portage, and then runs to exit Portage. So it is the only access point for those residents there, so. So I ask the administration to look into that, see what we need to do. I haven't been involved in my 20-plus years to rename anything, but you know, let's look into it and see what we can do then, and find out the residents there. Thank you.
It doesn't have a name though, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I know. You could rename it.
No, I know that. For them to name anything.
It would have a number though, so you'd have to rename it.
Yeah, okay.
Was it made in this area?
I don't, that's what we need to check out.
The numbers are like 22 and 53.
Sometimes they just call them the street or alleyways.
Place.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Push to address council?
Chuck Osborn, 307 Bray Muddler Street, Southwestern North Canton, Ohio. Kind of having prepared remarks, I just want to address several pieces of legislation here. Your first one there, 33, 2016. Again, I'm scratching my head and continue to give these types of amendments to multi millionaires, hanging corporations. That's LMD, that's by D. Hoff. And review of, I think this is probably the second debate with the data paper. They brought one job to town, and I think he was only given credit for 20 hours a week. The compensation that you propose for the key positions here in the city. I think I provided that to council. Since 2013, we're looking at a 26% raise for the Director of Administration, a nearly 44% increase for the Director of Law, and nearly 28% for the Finance and City Engineering. Now, Mr. Peters started this because of the search for a new Finance Director. Maybe I should call your attention, the responsibilities of the Director of Finance have probably been cut in half in the last year or so. We are outsourcing out income tax collections to the state, and utilities have been automated. Both of these activities have resulted in probably a 50% reduction in personnel in the Finance Director. So last one thing, I don't think this is warranted one iota. I went back and looked at the ad that was posted back in 2010, when Mrs. Albert came, and this, she apparently is making a routine to not show up for meetings anymore. I guess I can't blame her. Same thing, I'm sure, with me this year. You have actually reduced the requirements for this job, qualifications. You require CPA or MBA. I qualify, I have an MBA. You require banking and finance. I have banking experience, commercial lending at the former bank, one. I have several years of credit experience, lending millions of dollars. I qualify for these jobs. Of course, I don't, you probably hired a monkey before you hired me, but I don't know why these salaries are being increased, and why the job description and qualifications are being watered down. There's so many qualifiers in this announcement. There's nothing for you to hang your hat on. You can have this, or you can qualify for this. Are we grooming a friend of the mayor, or a former friend of council for this position? I've been up here for 16, 17 years, and it's good to be a usable chair of the people that cycle in and out of key positions in this city. I was stunned years ago, Mr. Zubar, after just a short while. It became, obviously, this was a temporary stop for him on his move up the ladder. So I'd like to know, honestly, why there was a need to increase these salaries. North Canton is still struggling. You're going to create such a disparity in salaries between the rank and file workers in this city. And for many years, what we've seen is either no salary increase for these unionized employees, or one season, 20% increase a year. Can you increase the cap for each positions in double digit? And I'm sure you're not stupid, a 25% increase for somebody making a hundred thousand dollars a year is $25,000. How much would increase for somebody at the bottom of the poll making 25,000? And you just give them a 1% or 2% increase? You're creating problems for yourself down the future. And I don't know if these people can strike, but you're obviously looking at going directly to mining arbitration, and you're going to lose every time because of these inflated salaries that you're giving out. Castle.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mary, well, Mr. Peters, whoever, and I did some research this past week in salaries. I mailed the three sister cities, and as you remember, the sister cities are what the lottery uses to compare to. I contacted Green, Canton, and Akron. I contacted them all by email, they all answered me within 48 hours, and nobody asked me to send them any money. As you see by my research, and the numbers may be a little bit off, because some of this is through the computer. North Canton is the second smallest city in population. If you look at the salaries for the Director of Law, our second smallest population has the second highest salary. The only salary higher for Director of Law was Akron with a population of 190,000, which is about seven or eight times what our population is. And anybody that reads the internet or the paper knows that there is a surplus of lawyers. There have been universities who are closing their law school because there are no jobs for lawyers. So my personal opinion is that this salary is inflated unnecessarily. Same with the Director of Finance, where they second highest salary, and I realize it's the range, and that's the top cap. And what they sent me was either a fixed salary or a higher cap. Again, the Director of Finance, the only one that's higher is Akron with 190,000 folks. So I ask you not to pass this sort of emergency tonight, but do a little bit more research and make these salaries more realistic. Lucky, tonight you get two here. My second handout is, big companies are building for venture, the new assisted living in Appleville. As you see, the value of the buildings are $16 million. It's going to be a huge business, with three-story apartment buildings, assisted living, I have companies, beds are going to be in assisted living. Usually, these big ones are underground, and the single rooms usually command around $4,000 on the ground. Most of the jobs are minimum wage jobs, except I know they have a corporate director that does all of their assisted ladies, and they will have one director of the Mercedes, but they have plenty of people in on each shift, the rest are all minimum wage jobs. The cooks, the cleaners, and the carers, they aren't even certified for Mercedes. State laws says they only have to be carers. There's going to be a lot of money made out of this complex. So I ask you please to consider not giving this developer 15% or 100% of ABA. If you feel that you have to give some abatement, cut it down to maybe 25%. Like I said, there's going to be a lot of money made here, and our schools need the money very, very badly. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
Good evening. John Arnold, 95 West Road, Akron, Ohio, 44313. In my experience on public meetings, mostly empty council room is very much positive. That means each one of you are really doing a good job, and feathers are not ruffled too much. So for that, thank you all for doing, you know, a good job, and having the best interests of our community in mind. Just very briefly, in regards to the CRA legislation, as I've stated before, I'm a North Canton guy. I graduated from Hoover with a little convincing, hopefully down the road, my wife back down here in this community. And it would be a shame to see you guys not use every single economic tool available within your tool chest to continue, to continue to keep this community, the community that each one of us in here. You do so when you think of North Canton. You think of wonderful city neighborhood, community, great jobs, wonderful city services, the schools, of course, top notch. I would hate to see a waste of opportunity to keep our city a great place. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Let's go. Anything else? Push to address council? Okay, see none, we will move on to all business. I have a motion and a second to read by title, only the third reading of ordinance number 33 dash 16. So move. Second.
Peterson?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Lerman?
Yes.
Surratt?
Yes.
Foles?
Yes.
Montague?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Six chapters, only the third reading of Resolution 1, 2016. In Resolution 1, you're going to break into Resolution number 5, 4, 7, 1963, designating the city of North Canton as a dogwood city.
Thank you. Cheryl, we keep your...
Mark, what are you talking about? There's a little red.
There you go. This would get, I know Greg had spoken about this, was a part of the master plan that occurred in 2011, 2012. This was an open forum to anybody who wanted to comment, and the outside term facilitated this against the university, and part of the number one thing, that they want a better identity to our city. So that was one of the number one things on the plan. So, yeah, if you have a plan, then follow it, or don't you follow it? And so this is where we're at at this point with this. And when you look at this, you know, in respect to what Greg said in the Dogwood Tree, as I mentioned last week, I put down another resolution to make the Dogwood Tree our city tree. So we all respect this history. This past weekend had the most beautiful Dogwood Tree blooming I've ever seen in my career, the Mayan snows. But there were a lot of Dogwood Tree on the terraces. I wondered if God gave it back to me for any of this, but they are very beautiful trees, and I do think there's a place for that now. The history, by the league, we need to be called the Dogwood Tree, and that's what this thing said. Didn't really identify who we are as a city, and we should just be just North Canton. So I'm just with those statements there, move forward with this, and adopt this agreement and the third reading for this resolution. That's my motion.
Second.
Surratt?
Yes. Foles? Yes.
Montague?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Lerman?
Yes.
Six chapters, only the third reading of our Resolution 1, 2016.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to read by title, only the first reading of ordinance number 37 dash 16.
Seven.
Second.
Foles?
Yes.
Montague?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Lerman?
Yes.
Surratt?
Yes.
Six chapters, only the third reading of our Resolution 1, 2016.
Thank you. Cheryl, we keep your...
Yes, because of the agreements, we all have that the last four weeks, questions and signs, we review the reading, you know, expires at the end of this year, so.
So much.
Correct. All right, push to read out.
Second.
Peters?
Yes.
Lerman?
Yes.
Surratt?
Yes.
Montague?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Six chapters, only the third reading of the ordinance, number 33, 2016.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to read by title, only the third reading of Resolution number 1 dash 16.
Come on.
Second.
Lerman?
Yes.
Surratt?
Yes.
Montague?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Six chapters, only the third reading of Resolution 1, 2016.
Thank you. Cheryl, we keep your...
Mark, what are you talking about? There's a little red.
There you go. This would get, I know Greg had spoken about this, was a part of the master plan that occurred in 2011, 2012. This was an open forum to anybody who wanted to comment, and the outside term facilitated this against the university, and part of the number one thing, that they want a better identity to our city. So that was one of the number one things on the plan. So, yeah, if you have a plan, then follow it, or don't you follow it? And so this is where we're at at this point with this. And when you look at this, you know, in respect to what Greg said in the Dogwood Tree, as I mentioned last week, I put down another resolution to make the Dogwood Tree our city tree. So we all respect this history. This past weekend had the most beautiful Dogwood Tree blooming I've ever seen in my career, the Mayan snows. But there were a lot of Dogwood Tree on the terraces. I wondered if God gave it back to me for any of this, but they are very beautiful trees, and I do think there's a place for that now. The history, by the league, we need to be called the Dogwood Tree, and that's what this thing said. Didn't really identify who we are as a city, and we should just be just North Canton. So I'm just with those statements there, move forward with this, and adopt this agreement and the third reading for this resolution. That's my motion.
Second.
Surratt?
Yes. Foles? Yes.
Montague?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Lerman?
Yes.
Six chapters, only the third reading of our Resolution 1, 2016.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to read by title, only the first reading of ordinance number 37 dash 16.
Seven.
Second.
Foles?
Yes.
Montague?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Lerman?
Yes.
Six chapters, only the third reading of our Resolution 1, 2016.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to read by title, only the first reading of ordinance number 37 dash 16.
Seven.
Second.
Foles?
Yes.
Montague?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Lerman?
Yes.
Surratt?
Yes.
Six chapters, only the third reading of the ordinance, number 37, 2016, and ordinance in section 20, compensation of chapter 155, personal regulation of part one of the municipal code of the qualified owners of the city of North Canton to update the compensation level of exempt employees in line with non-exempt employees, and thereby, a member of the city can comfortably recruit, attract, and maintain the relevant rights and experience clear and managers, and determine the city's obligations.
Thank you very much. And before I ask for a motion and a second to adopt, this is a companion piece to ordinance number 3816 that deals with vacations as well. To some of the comments that were made earlier, it's dropped more, it's off, man. I agree to an extent. I understand your argument, and I'm looking at the salaries here, I'm looking at size of the community, and I get that argument, but if we want to attract somebody from one of those communities that, you know, has experience dealing with a larger, much more diverse budget, we need to be competitive. You know, you're not a small-time law director, director of administration, you know, not a small-time director of administration, we're going to pay a small-time pay too. And we need to be, I'm not necessarily looking at the size of the community, I'm looking at the level of expertise that we're going to attract.
Well, and I think the other thing to recognize, and I appreciate this chart, but at this current time, you know, looking at law and finance, and you'll want to know what you're about to engineer, we're 20,000 below, I mean, most of these levels. So we are possibly with Wadsworth, which somehow has, you know, some lower numbers there, but if you look at the other ones, and Fairby Park on the shore, we are 20 plus thousand below in a lot of those. So I think, you know, and John, you said a good remark, it's tools, it's tools that we have in our tool belt to attract and retain good talent. And this gives us the flexibility to have some higher limits. If someone comes in with all the expertise that we want, and can handle challenges that we may have, or can bring on the right side, then we need that ability to perform that. I mean, I think, possibly, I think we just hired somebody. So Green was able to attract somebody for 100,000. And Worcester, we didn't pull Worcester numbers, but that is probably higher, and they have a similar trend, I'll indicate.
Now, and if I could, if I could go here, and I think Chuck, in his comments, kind alluded to this fact, these are automatic raises for these positions, these salary ranges.
Right. It gives us flexibility.
We have always, historically, been lower than all the communities around us, including our communities that are on here. I think we've always been very physically sound in our, you know, in our salaries that we've given, some of our executives, and, you know, it's just where we're at right now. I looked at Green, when they hired their finance director, the lawyer, and the salary range, the lawyer was 95, I think it was upwards of, you know, 135. So, you know, we put ours out at the same time they did.
I mean, these were, these were salaries, right, Lerman? These were the current salaries that they're getting. Do you think they have a range?
Yeah, their range is probably a little higher than that, but anybody, but anybody that was coming in, if we kept it at where we were at, okay, and you compared apples to apples, where are you going to get the better apples? They're going to go to Green. And it's just as simple as that. And again, I understand the size of the city argument, I get that, and I'm with you 100% on that, but in order to attract the type of talent that we want to attract, we have to compete with some of the bigger folks.
Well, and if we want an MBA or CPA, those are the kind of features that you weren't going to have to generate. So we might not say that on there, but we are certainly looking at that. I mean, I just asked tonight, did anyone talk, you know, is there a CPA or this person? And we are looking at that.
Mark? And I would leave the part of the range, if ranges would offer you, you know, a wide variety, this would be more going higher than this, but at that level, but the other thing range is it gives you incentive for keeping those people as they grow, as they get more further, you can move their salary up, especially if you don't want to lose people when we do get them. So to have range is really helps them to get the right people, but then keep them with us, even though you can get, someone's going to come on someday, and add another five or 10,000 bucks, and someone will go. And we're going to have a bad person, it means a lot to us, but we hold it, as long as we have the range of that. But the higher, the highest salary, I don't, I can't imagine we would give the highest salary, it's the range. So, you know, you look at these numbers, they're kind of apples, oranges in some ways.
Your range is seventy-five, one fifteen.
Right.
So, it gives you that flexibility to get private sector people as well.
I give it Chuck. Any other comments? I can't hear. Okay, see none, I'll entertain a motion and a second to adopt first reading of ordinance number thirty-seven dash sixteen.
So move. Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
Surratt.
Yes.
And Holt.
Yeah.
Six chapters to adopt the first reading of ordinance number thirty-seven two thousand sixteen.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to read by title only first reading of ordinance number thirty-eight dash sixteen.
Seven. Second.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Mary. Yes.
Surratt.
Yes.
Yes.
And take.
Yes.
Six chapters to read by law with the first reading of ordinance number thirty-eight two thousand sixteen. In ordinance in section ten, vacation regulations of chapter one five five personnel regulations of part one of the municipal code of the classified ordinance of the city of North Canton to update the vacation levels of exempt employees in line with the written queries and thereby permit the city to comfortably recruit, attract, and maintain highly trained and experienced leaders and manage and determine the city to be eligible.
Thank you. This is the companion piece that I was talking about. This allows us, another tool in our toolbox, and allows us flexibility as well. For example, if you have some of, one of these largest cities are at the tail end of their career and maybe are looking more for, you know, a change of venue and maybe take a little more salary. But they want more vacation, they want to travel with their wife, their children, their families, whatever. This gives us more flexibility. And on top of that, if you have somebody that, you know, the past twenty years that have accumulated four or five weeks vacation, you know, new hires started one week and you're bound by law. And that was a deal breaker for a lot of these folks. And this allows us to hand in hand attract that same, that same talent we were addressing in ordinance number thirty-seven.
The limit is four weeks, right?
Limit is?
Four.
Four weeks, yes. Any other questions concerning that? Okay, I'll entertain a motion and a second to adopt the first reading of ordinance number thirty-two dash sixteen.
So move. Second.
Peters.
Yes.
Mary. Yes.
Surratt.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
And take.
Yes.
Yes.
Less tasks associated with me, that different things is here to help that. Green needed to find a structure in some way, so when we're not continuous, maybe these are ways that we could even share services. So we would hire one, you know, finance person, one law director, these kind of things happen. And so I think sometimes when you look at that progressively and say, well, could we share one entity and then maybe have two people that, to that person? I mean, I have seen it in some other areas of the state, it does seem to work. We have the engineer that works for the whole county and it works for all the entities. So I think some of these types, I mean, you look at some areas, the state of Virginia has one superintendent for, you know, all these candidates. Our Stark County, they sent these super attendants, do we need that? So just sometimes when these opportunities present, we might want to look and say, how can we be progressive and adapt to that as well? That's it.
I agree with all those comments and I also want to say, all these years, they've been going around about vacation and I apologize for being sort of on the other end of it. I completely agree that we need to open up the vacation and the fact that people can come in with a lot of experience and give the entities the opportunity to increase that rate. I can't even imagine coming in and getting too much of vacation, I apologize. So, I completely agree with that part, but I'm glad we've finally gotten there. As far as the wage range, got enough, like what other job doesn't have a wage range? I mean, it's crazy that we didn't have a wage, so I'm all for it, I'm excited for you on that.
Number four. Just another kudo for Doug, a good cleanup day we had. We actually said, and that was just a wonderful event that we continue to do hopefully over and over again to further clean up the whole county. Really, we had a really opening day this past weekend and the mayor had his opportunity to throw the first pitch off. What he did not realize is that they moved the mound back by the way.
He always had a hard time with it. Let's be honest.
A lot of small cars. He got it, he got it over with, so it was welcome. You know, those kind of things, you see a lot of people out there and it just represents us really well, we have to share, you know, the safety and all these people coming together. So, it was a nice thing. Now, as I drove there and drove back, you know, and I saw this 720 thing and which my wife and I went to, I go, what was really cool, as you mentioned, is we got all these people over there walking up and down the hallways. Eating outside of Main Street, this is just the beginning, you know, once this gets going over here, that's the kind of snapshot we want to see all the time. And to have more of those, you know, have things in the park like the, the amphitheater or whatever we decide to do there. But that's the kind of, you know, atmosphere we want to have all the time. And that was a big, big plus right there, it was a successful thing that they did there, I hope they continue to, I know they got a couple more things, but hopefully more of that happening. Now, our G was part of it, so hopefully in the future we'll see a lot more of the pluses that have, you know, this whole change, so let's go. And that's, that's all my reports.
Number four. And, yeah, the cleanup, we wanted to have a lot of people coming out. Countless people out, Mark and Jeff and his daughters, his inbox came out and Chief came out. It was good, we're gonna build from the future, so they should be more here. So, yeah, that's understandable. As long as you went out and did something that day to help improve where it can, and that's what it was about, I think we'll just continue to grow with that in the future. If you want to get your maps out, I'll leave you for a man's story is as far as the alley we're talking about. If you go and you look, you might not have a map, but if you have a map, you're, it comes on a map. If you take Fortage out past Charlotte where they come together, that is Willamette, that runs south. Okay, if you take Fortage, just go down the road here, and you know where Charlotte comes, you get it, and then there's, that street is Willamette. If you see that little road that runs west and then north, that is what we're talking about.
Right before Parkport?
Yeah, that's correct. And then the next street, you can park view to the west, so that is, that is the unnamed or numbered street alley we're looking at.
So you wanted to go from Willamette to Fortage?
It already does.
But you wanted me to go one.
It had no name, what they're looking for is like the intended public streets. They need an appliance, just something, some commercial truck where they're gonna park them, you really don't want the park at Fortage. So you really want to give another, what do you tell them? The first, the driveway path.
Yeah, we'd be happy to pay for whatever sign it's on. Oh, be careful what you, you walk.
Careful. Be like one that go flying. We're getting delivery. It takes a mountain, it costs a buck.
Ten thousand dollars.
Okay, okay, yeah, I'm in favor of a wave, that's a great one. Also, as far as the cleanup though, I received a letter, I'll show you guys here after council made a thank you note for the folks over in, for very, kind of many, we know a lot of, it's very, very thankful. And that's it for me, Eric Wong.
Yes, just to tag on to that, congratulations to the folks at 720. I think that perhaps as the first event that they had there, they were taking a little bit of a chance of not knowing how well it would be received. And I had gone by it a couple times and, and of course did stop in and it was just packed with people, annoying insults, the weather was terrific, the rain didn't come on the tail end. But it did show that we're successful, folks wanted to get out and see some of the farmer's market and some of the other attractions that they had there. So it was a nice success for them and I understand they have two more, one there and then the other one, Waterside.
Waterside.
That's what it is. Great job. That's it.
Director of administration.
I appreciate you passing the ordinance and resolution on an emergency and short notice that we gave you and we do appreciate that, so we can get going on that. And just so there's, I guess no, for the record, Engineer Davis works for me, he's part of our staff, he's not here tonight. And the reason he's not here is because I excuse him for not being here, he has a family thing and also he has nothing on the agenda, so that's how that's done, he goes to me, he just does not show up. I think anybody that's worked with Engineer Davis knows that he's a problem solver, not a dodger. He'll be there, he's there eight to nine o'clock at the meeting, he'll be the first person I call in the morning about the alley and the streets, because he'll know everything about that and how they're named. And he'll give us probably two or three ideas on how they want to do that. So just as a member of my staff, he's not dodging anything, there's nothing in the charter, anything that says he has to be here, he's at most meetings, but I excuse him for that.
He's always there.
That's America.
Great, thank you. First off, I'd like to thank the folks for coming out tonight and bringing this far attention about the alleyway, because your pad race does say Fortage. So it's a little confusing for the delivery people and also getting a visit to their house. That's something I never thought of, because it was really interesting and a beautiful name for your child, too. And then Mark and I went to the opening day, it was kind of, it was really interesting because, you know, all before noon on Saturday in Orkania. We went to the special Olympics, it was all under Orkania. We had hundreds of special leagues, athletes, volunteers and coaches, that was a great event. I lost part to the J C's, and then I went to the opening day for the Little League, which was, that's fantastic, too. And Mark always leaves the Little League.
Pledge.
Pledge, I was gonna say forever, pledge. And that event is fantastic. I mean, you get hundreds of little ball players and their families out for that and Marcia, thank you for reminding me, this is my most stressful day of the year.
My son was a freshman.
There was none, you get, we get up all sorts of events, but that drawing of the first pitch was scratch for me.
I know, it was.
I'm not a real baseball player, I'm drawing the first pitch in front of Little Leagueers that will boo you, you'll get up there and go. Not to mention, last year when I had lobbed it with accuracy, our councilman, Sretta, reminded me, because that had kind of like an arc, like a softball pitch there. And so I threw a little faster, and made over and played that ball good. And I didn't get booed, so, and then after that, I think the 720 market, that was excellent. So all within, I took a couple of my kids, we all within a few hours, we do all these events all in one home. So really is, is very, very nice. And as you can notice, with the spring cleanup, Doug, that was great, because the first one, and people I had a call this morning, when we had our city, Chris out cleaning all our lawn, some sidewalks on the street, people are wrong, cleaning, safe, safe. As long as we keep it clean, we keep it safe, people love that. What's that?
Taste of North Canaan.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, Taste of North Canaan, that was another great event, that was.
Well, that's Wednesday, that's Wednesday.
It was a Wednesday, I mean, that was a record set for them, right?
Dave, you should pay your kids and say five hundred.
Yeah, that was really a great time.
It was, yeah, it was a great event, yeah. Lot of food, a lot of drinks, a lot of stuff, yeah. Took a very, I was.
Yeah.
Just remind me, but, you know, it's amazing when you look at what we have behind the city, there's a lot of great events. And I, and I don't just say this, people regularly, and I know they come up to you folks, they say, you know, we love the city of North Canaan. It's a great city, they like coming to shop here, they like coming to different events, and it's all because of the people that serve here, you folks and also the people who work here. Which brings me to my next, final subject, as far as the salary rating, because Chuck, you bring a very good point to Mary, you bring a excellent point, too. I mean, our goal is not to give away money to the city because we have less of it, we certainly have less of it. But at the same time, you know, you get what you pay for. If you want somebody that has experience in serving as a finance director or a city administrator, then, you know, you're gonna have to be competitive with the city of Green, with the city of Canaan, with the city of Attica. We're competing against all these other little subdivisions to get the best and the brightest and most talented and most positions. And I just know from hiring a number of people here, that if you want to lower the salary, you can give plenty of applicants, but they just won't have the experience that you're looking for. So I appreciate council setting the range, doesn't mean you have to pay the person that amount. The other thing with the finance director, each city's different. You look at the city of Canaan, larger population, but they have an audit department with the staff, they have a treasurer's department with the staff. They have a budget director department in the administrator office. They have a human resource department and its staff. They have an economic development department and its staff, as we do too. But on all those other areas with the exception of economic development, our finance director is the treasurer, they're the pseudo IT person, they're a pseudo payroll HR person, they're the auditor. And then they have the management staff, they're the income tax collection, they're the utilities. So they have, in our city, a lot of our positions are more of a general, so they have to deal with a lot. Because I know a number of people who have been acquired about the finance director position, and these are from larger political subdivisions. They do not have experience in certain areas that this position's covering. So it is one of the little things that are very subtle, but really important. So I appreciate the council setting the range and introducing the vacation, that's all.
Matt Clark.
I answered, you not have a report to.
Do you have records or anything?
No.
We do not, for the record. Always a nice common denominator. I think we look at the city of Orkania, we have ninety-five hundred people, and we look at a person like Mike Ryan, he's a ministry or one of the paying, you know. Go get a public, private secretary, see what you pay somebody that run, run a small company of a hundred people that deal with five or six unions and safety forces, everything else. I mean, we get in for a bar and I think those are good choices, that the mayor made and we confirm, so put that in, like I said, the private secretary, see what those jobs have. With perks, I know government, you have a good pension and so forth, but let's not lose sight of that. This is a business here, it's a government business, but still it's very important to, to, I knew it is. Well, that reminds me of the conversation the mayor and I had earlier today, and I think it piggybacked off a conversation we had about a week ago regarding the vacations. Mike goes on vacation, but something happens back here, we all, he's still responsible? He's still responsible.
And so, finance director?
Look at that, that's what I was getting at, it's more not than I was.
Okay, very good, well, seeing a note of business, entertaining motion to adjourn this meeting, so move second. Those friends say aye, and both same side, we adjourn this one. I would now call to order that special committee, the whole meeting, Monday, May second, May ninth, this will be 2016 at seven fifty-five P M. So please call the roll. You don't have to, you don't have to say aye, although you are sitting there in fine and discreet. You don't have to say aye. Hey, guys, have a good one. Okay, we have six present, we have a motion, a second to, remember, so move second. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. It's a great.
Yes.
All right, now first off and only, this community economic development chairman.
Okay, sorry for not hearing you guys, I was thinking of the year banquet, my son did not do it like his girlfriend did, so it was so hot, so awesome.
I'm so glad, is that a great, congratulations.
He just got most likely to stay. Yeah, right, I know. All right, so first things first, I've got this, we're gonna start, we're gonna start with the map, we're gonna start with the map. So we have a map, we originally, you know, we'll backtrack a little bit, we originally had a whole entire city. Then we sort of break Derek out a little bit and I'm gonna ask him to trick out some air. Then we had a lot of stuff of what happened in those two weeks when we did that. And now currently, this map is the newest map that has all of Monticello, all of the sanctuary out, with the sanctuary green, because that was never taken out, that's always been in. And Waterside Park has been put back into this map in the seventh summer, so that being on this map. That's all I'm saying, I'm not saying, you know, we have to stick with it, I'm just saying that's what this map is depicting. We can very easily change this map, but that's what we have to agree on. Dominic can't discuss it, so it's up to us what we want in, what we want out, we actually have to have a vote on it. We may need to do that sort of separately, because the rest of the legislation, I think, is very smooth with me. This is gonna maybe be not as smooth. So, let's start with Waterside. So we took it out originally because it's been there for so long, I think the viewers are a little frustrated. And we also heard rumors that they were potentially gonna put apartments on it, so that frustrated us even more, because currently the zoning gives them the right to do that. Obviously, that's not what we want for Waterside, we helped them build roads, the state piled up on building roads, put in high-tech jobs, and it's been sitting there for almost ten years, naked. At this point, we've spoken to the owners, all of us, and they have written us a letter and everybody has a copy of it, stating that they will, you know, they will not build apartments on that property for the next ten years without any question. So that is in writing, you know, I do not, we go back on it, but we'll make sure Tim seals it, signs, seal and deliver. So as far as my concern, I'm okay with that, I mean, that could take ten more years. Their ultimate goal is to put jobs in there, not apartment buildings, I think we all know that. They only make money if they put jobs in there, not apartment buildings. So that is our goal, that is their goal. I'm okay with putting Waterside back in, so I think we all need to agree on that. We're gonna go one step at a time, so with Waterside, I'm opening it up to conversation.
What's it, what's it, Joey, what is Waterside, Joey?
It's G B, what's Waterside, G B?
G B A.
Day, but G B A allows, well, I think.
Of the twelve units per year on the density.
So would that be fifty thousand, fifty percent?
So if they wanted to, so let's talk about that later.
Okay.
That's a different piece of legislation. So let's start about Waterside, not future Waterside, Waterside right now. Are we putting it back in the area where they could get, if they build a business? A hundred percent for ten years, a hundred percent for, yeah, ten years, because it's a new building in the CRA.
I have a question. Isn't it an existing community reinvestment area now?
It is.
Okay.
No, what?
Yes.
It's, Doug, as, is it in the CRA now, yes it is, it's in the Main Street.
Oh, yeah, that is in the Main Street, right, so we were gonna take it out.
Okay, but the parcel, is the parcel end, how far back does Waterside go, does it go to?
Go to Mississippi.
Yeah, it goes to Mississippi, does it go further east to, I can't read that.
That's, oh, that's.
Is that the property limit, is that, is that the east property line on Waterside that shows you in the CRA?
Mississippi.
Yes. There's a home that happens right now.
Is that very powerful?
And then we get a stadium, the top case in, right, there's that home that's.
Okay, so the property's outlined by the CRA.
Correct.
Uh, diagonal drawings that we see now, just want to make sure it looks.
Just point out to anyone that doesn't know, that entire area is big.
Yes.
This is.
I just drove up that area.
And I believe the Waterside region, the road, the state, the city, it's sort of, that's around two thousand seven, two thousand eight. Gravities bring in approximately a hundred and twenty high-tech jobs, it's just big, it's just grass.
So this is why we use our tools to get.
To encourage that. If that can bring something in, granted, it may be fifteen years before you start seeing that in property taxes, but perhaps you'll start seeing it right away in the taxes. But if, if this doesn't encourage building on there now.
Well, here's the, here's the point, though, it has encouraged it. Because why haven't they come to the table and, and ten years it's been, it's been in the reinvestment again? What other management give them?
There were, there were restrictions.
There were restrictions.
Oh, there's no restrictions from that, it has.
No, I don't think there was any restrictions, if they would have shown the ready for a job, they would have got it sometime, or maybe it was tech, it was high-tech.
That's part of the, the.
Right, I didn't hear that, but if you said.
I'm saying if there would have been a business opportunity, there wasn't there abatement available to them.
There, there are restrictions on, through the grants, the one sixty-six are a need for it. The restrictions are fifty percent of the jobs have to be high-tech.
Okay.
Okay, and that was hot, that was a hot market when we wrote the grant, and then roads finished in two thousand and nine, right in the heat of session. And since then, we had a change.
What I'm saying, if they would have found a business to relocate there, say the Icehatter, it went up to forty. They would have got the same kind of abatement that we gave for inside view.
Yeah, inside view, fifty percent.
They would have got fifty percent, but nothing's ever resulted.
The land cost was much higher.
That's up to them, or that's what they want to sell it for, that's my point.
But, to your point, it's already in the H U C.
It's already in, but they haven't done anything with it, and I think that's an aggravation point for mine.
I, I agree, but.
Because we, we ponied up the tax dollars and some of our own money for that work, and I'm still perplexed by that hasn't happened. And now that you actually look at me, you're multi-family, there's, there's no way I can support that.
Well, we do have a tenure letter and everything.
That's fine, tenure letter, I think we should look at it, show anything, stop that anyway, because what we're after is jobs in that board, not multi-family. Where someone writes us a, a communication and says, you know, we're not gonna do it, we're just gonna make sure it's not gonna happen, because we need jobs in this town, that's why we made the investment ten years ago.
Absolutely.
And I'm, I'm sorry, I'm so adamant and passionate about this, but I watched this, just developed all these years and I'm still, I'm still perplexed by it. So to me, they're out, they have done ten years, that's my fault, but you guys can, you know.
But for the, even the least.
They're in, they're in now, but.
So I, I, I want.
And I need to add a point to everybody, it became my conversation.
They're in, they're in it right now, so I really can't take it out.
Well, we can do it, I mean, we want to.
Me, I, or.
You know, we can adjust this every two, you know, that's the point is, if there's tools out there, no one's using it, maybe we should say, you know, maybe not a bill for it in the future unless you want to really do something for the community here.
How would you remove that?
Well, like we remove neighborhood, sir, you know.
However, before the. But there are three jobs, why would you remove?
Because they have not, they have not done anything with it.
I know.
But what's, what was the point of that, ten years?
But if we remove that.
You gotta understand, we quit making investments with that. This isn't just, it's, it's a CRA area that we have an investment, but we made the investment with that, that's the difference, that's the other card we play there. That's why I'm so passionate about this.
Doug, I can understand, I mean, there's a little bit more passion, but I think it's more frustration, you have, you have enough of it, and that's why, I don't understand that, but if, if this letter is binding, there's ten years there. We don't want apartments, we know that, we said that, okay, and, because we were afraid what those apartments are gonna look like in twenty years. So, but we can change the zoning for this.
Yes.
Anytime. So if you give them the ten years and put this in, I, I wouldn't even have a problem with that, we can change their zoning anytime, we can change it this year. But then, you had ten years, Derek, this is a binding letter that says no apartments in there, and we have the opportunity to maybe incentivize someone that can bring businesses. And we got until the end of two thousand nineteen before that grant restriction of fifty percent, right, two thousand, the end of, yeah, two thousand nineteen. So there's still time, right? Again, we have, we can do this two years from now and change it, too, because we're gonna look at this every year.
Correct, it is in the current legislation, we all agree upon that.
So, 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 you know, I, I saw the letter and I, I think I require some additional information in the letter. I believe the letter was signed by members from community development, that parcel was owned by Waterside Development, Stark County. Doesn't mention that they have the authority to bind the membership and so forth, but if, if that was their intent, I think it may have been something informal, a little more to the handshake agreement. And maybe, you know, if we will put it in writing that this, this is what we're willing to do, I would just require a little more formal letter. But I think Doug had it correct, and if you want to prevent it from being multi-family, then we should zone that out.
I think we should do that.
Well, we are looking at Zonico here real soon, so, a little other project, maybe one of your time. Dave, did you say what you think it said?
Yeah, just to clarify, I think that it's, I can sense Doug's frustration, because it's been the same frustration that a lot of us have, you know, we did make an investment in that, in, in the Waterside. But we were hoping that we would have something built by now, but, but the thing is, it's still an area of growth for the city. And the goal of the CRA is to incentivize, is to bring incentive for people to build it. Whether it's residential homes, or commercial, or whatever they're, they're looking to build, so that's what our goal is. If there isn't building on a particular lot, we have to ask why hasn't there been building on that particular lot? In the case of Waterside, it could have been due to restrictions, due to the State of Ohio Grant, which said fifty percent of the jobs have to be high-tech. I also agree with the comments that our council members made in reference to, you know, bringing in jobs. Because keep in mind, that on average, forty percent or less of the residents pay income tax that live here in the city. So sixty percent of the people that live in our city do not pay income tax. So when we're building residential, whether it's apartment, apartments or homes, that does not necessarily mean an increase in income tax. Which is responsible for sixty-seven percent of our general fund. Jobs, when you work in the city, the city is guaranteed to collect income tax from the job. So obviously the jobs are a priority. Waterside, if, if this can serve as an incentive or a greater incentive to bring jobs, I think that's a, that's a great tool to have. But as a lot of writers have said, it's just because they put the letter, I think it represents their intent, that they're saying, we would like to have as many incentives to build for new jobs as possible. And that if they had extra incentives, they wouldn't be as inclined to build multi-family, right? But you're saying that's not binding.
I, I would like to reinforce it before if something went wrong and there was a misunderstanding and so forth, yeah, I'd like it to be.
So the, the way to ensure is to change the zoning, which, Marcia, that's uncertain, yeah.
Yeah, let me make this statement, I'm pretty hardcore on this with, you know, I understand that killing the belt is good for the city, I understand they're quality developers, I'm not saying that. I don't want people to miss me, it's true, Washington Square is one of the most viable economic things that we have here, and we're proud of, they've done good work here. But I also see where I think, when we partner, I think they can hopefully do more in the future. But I also see where I think, when we partner, I think they can hopefully do more in the future, that's all I'm saying. I think there should have been a return on our investment by now, so that's my, my aggravation, so.
And I'll clarify also, you know, apartments, you know, to look at this, this would be in my, you know, vision kind of thing, this would be a nice mixed-use place. Because we have to remember, when you put people somewhere, they're gonna need places to eat, they're gonna need places to do their shopping, so if you just can't put, you know, a nice area there would be, you know, apartments in the back, businesses out front, I mean, and I'm true, I think that point there, because you have more people there that are going to be hopefully working and shopping and doing this stuff. You just, you know, you just can't overload the entire city with apartments, especially with the, you know, across the street going and so on. So I'd clarify that, to not understand this frustration, because of the years that it's been involved with this thing. But our business sense, we need business, we need business, we need people that pays our bills. So we can give them here and pay their taxes on for that. I don't want to confuse you, Chair.
To answer your question.
Okay, so we're, so it appears as if we all agree we leave Waterside in the CRA, because they are currently in the CRA. We only wanted to clarify, because we had talked earlier about seeing them out, but we're gonna get a little bit better.
Let me say this, because I brought it up today already, you know, earlier in conversation. If there's not a shovel turn, I think we review this in two years, then it's out.
That is definitely.
I'd like to see, I'd like to see this, this council put some type of a time plan, and that's gonna coincide with one of those grants due, you know, or grant for John with Waterside project, I don't think that's a reasonable.
What is this, that's a fish on.
Twenty nineteen.
Or twenty sixteen. Because I think that should be a recommendation, and we bring this chat to us, maybe in two years, and review. If you haven't taken advantage of it, then maybe there's another way, maybe, maybe you don't get the, you know, the bait and process. I don't know.
And that's what we'll be doing, right, in two years.
Two years, so twenty, or do you remember twenty, right, twenty nineteen, watch to look at it. So I just want to make a question, yeah, by the time state freezes, it's gonna be fall, so we'll look at it again, January twenty nineteen.
Remember that each one of these, just because we're setting up this legislation to set up the CRA and its parameters, that from that, each one of them has to apply to another board, get that approved, it gets approved by the state, and then those, it's continuing, and it'll run through like we did the seasoning process to improve them in the future. So if we're going to do more certainly, then it's not gonna be waste in the.
So you'll get this binding, whatever this is supposed to be, sure.
All right, so that's, so we all still pretty relieved in sanctuary out, correct? All of sanctuary is still pretty new. Monticello, I know I've had, you know, a few of you say, let's, let's put the, the older homes back in, but there's still several lots, we're seeing with the older homes that are open. And then, because we can make the map if we wanted, but.
We've only got two years of again.
Right, that's what I keep saying, so.
Yeah, and my concern, I have some residents that have called, so obviously we have new homes that are going in, so initially I'd say, well, Marcia, why can't we remove those areas that are vacant? But, I mean, we have homes that are twenty, twenty-five total, this isn't a new lot, like, this is taking a long time to complete. So I guess my question was, if you have people that are starting to look at, and even that fifteen, twenty years, and they start to do it with kitchen and bathroom, why wouldn't some reason incentivize those people the same as we want those people? And so, I guess I didn't know I was gonna keep some of it, and the sanctuary, I would say the same, I just don't know how in the sanctuary right now.
But I know these homes are, yeah.
You know, some are not.
You said the CEDO, what year was that, and the CEDO was just, what, two thousand and three, four, top, so yeah, it's fair to ten years.
I think you made a good point, I mean, you, you're a car owner, you're a lot, so. Well, Marcia, your point, the CEDO was in M O three, but they, they were in there until.
I six.
So late, right?
Yeah, so, CEDO is out, I think.
No, I, I think you never looked at it. Like, it's young family that's here. There's a family, and they're not in, they're not in the CRA.
Not around here.
Which is amazing, right? But they're not, but we want to put that house in with some of the more affluent areas. And I thank God for those people that, you know, that have the community that lives there, live in the city. But that's what this is about, it's, it's the story of remodeling a kitchen, building a two-car garage to their property, which they don't have. That, that's the focus of this, so why, you know, include everything in, let's, let's.